Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My, we have a lively bunch this evening. Welcome to your Danville City Commission regular meeting for this fine June evening, the 26th of 2017. As I look around to my left and my right, I believe we have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order, and I will ask that we begin with a moment of prayer given by Commissioner Cottle.
Heavenly Father, we thank you again for allowing us to join each other here in complete freedom to discuss the business of the city. We would ask that you guide us in a way that's pleasing to you, be with all those who find themselves away from home today and in harm's way, bless our first responders in all that they do, look down upon us with your guiding hand. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. We have the pleasure tonight of having with us our representative, Daniel Elliott, who is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Sir, you take the floor wherever you wish.
Thank you, Mayor. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Daniel, don't go anywhere. You go ahead. Come right on up here. Come right on up here. Yeah, well, hey, we make it a matter of giving key to the city, to all the people who lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Well, thank you very much.
Put that on him, why don't you?
Thank you so much.
You can get eight or nine cents for that on eBay, I'm pretty sure.
We're glad to have you with us, really. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Atkins, I'm glad you drew no blood there. Thank you very much. Commission, you have before you the agenda. Unless I hear otherwise, I will assume it meets with your approval. Silence gives consent. So we are in the section of our agenda called "Hear the Public," and this is to speak on any items that are on the agenda. You'll have another opportunity later on in the meeting for "Hear the Public" on any item that is on your hearts, minds, or your souls. So with that said, anyone want to speak on any item on the agenda? Dr. Williams, come forth, please, sir. How are you tonight, David?
I'm good. I'm good. David Williams here. I'm the owner of Berkman Industries, two manufacturing plants, one retail store here in the city. Obviously, I appreciate the opportunity to have this forum and have good dialogue with the commissioners and our friends throughout the community. But I would have to say that I need to express my concerns about the burdensome 33% increase in payroll tax and the 40% increase in net profit tax under consideration. In recent weeks, the community is being told that based upon a retreat conducted by the commission and staff, that our community has needs that require a $30 to $40 million investment. Some of you all have served on the commission in multiple previous terms. So it's a mystery to me as to why some of these needs have not been identified and addressed by previous administrations. The enormity in millions of dollars now described as vital needs creates thoughts of either, one, a lack of reasonable foresight in identifying such needs by city commissioners in prior years, or, two, whether or not some of the described needs may be better described as It has been my experience over the years that sometimes the economic concerns that we face are more of an idea problem than they are a money problem. As a citizen of Boyle County, it is difficult to decipher and understand all of the political wrangling that's in the environment today: the structure or restructure of EDP, issues concerning the operation of the Office of Planning and Zoning, understanding the analysis of outside consultant recommendations, capital funding for an industrial spec building, narrowing of Main Street, hiring additional staff for EDP in spite of disappointing job expansion in recent years, taxpayer required funding for a preservationist position, and consideration for an ice skating rink in Wexler Park. As an example, my study reveals an inherent conflict of interest in the EDP with property owned by the industrial foundation versus property owned by other private entities. Further, it is hard to justify why it would require an additional $25,000 per week to keep planning and zoning open for one more day of operation. In my 38 years as a resident of Boyle County, I can never remember a time that so many issues have been simultaneously presented to the community. I think the community, particularly the business community, is being asked to swallow an elephant because of all the simultaneous issues that our community currently faces. In my business experience, we have the best outcomes if we conquer elephant-sized issues one bite at a time. I agree with Mayor Perre's statement that complaints do not result in resolution. However, asking the community to accept your explanation that I must eat my words sideways, I find a disappointing explanation for a broken campaign promise. Promises unkept are another example of election campaigning political rhetoric and challenge me to believe, "Believe in me now and forget what I promised during the campaign." In terms of resolution, it is my opinion that there are two opportunities to save our community a tremendous amount of money that can be accomplished while further attempts to create more jobs are enacted. One, consolidation of city and county government would resolve the ongoing political wrangling and arguments that are ever-present currently in our community. Boyle County is the 111th smallest landmass county in the state while ranking 35th in population. Yet we operate under the age-old tradition of four governing bodies. If Jefferson County, Kentucky, with its population of 863,000 people, can successfully transition to a consolidated government, why can't we discuss that as an option for our community? Tremendous savings could be achieved by consolidation of the administrative overhead fixed cost of local government through the consolidation of Danville, Boyle County. The second opportunity, as a 38-year observer, for significant savings would be the merger of our public school systems into a single district. While keeping the autonomy of school identification, the consolidation of administration and school boards could and should result in significant savings. The duplication of all administrative overhead fixed costs in both government and public education, in my opinion, should be obvious to any responsible outside consulting party. It is both a mystery and a disappointment to me as to how the best solution to meet community needs is yet another tax increase in the amount of 33 and 40%. You know, if I went to my customers with that kind of a price increase, particularly after we just had it two years ago, I'm sure I would lose business. It appears to me that we have either not looked at strategic planning from a higher altitude, or this administration, as well as previously elected city and county officials, are unwilling to address two sacred cows, that if restructured, would accomplish savings that could be redirected into meeting community needs without the requirement of additional burdensome tax increases on business. Surely, this commission possesses the intellectual capital required to find a better resolution than default to ever-increasing taxes on business. The mayor says that looking forward, the answer is more jobs. Would a 33% to 40% tax increase in just two years since the last tax increase really offer any business owner incentive to invest in increasing jobs? It is my sincere hope that the outcome tonight will be the withdrawal of the proposed 30% to 40% tax increase and allow time for the pursuit of other options. I appreciate, as always, your house willingness to serve in the capacity that you do, and appreciate the freedom that we have as citizens to come and talk to you of matters of importance to our community. To make sure there's no misunderstanding in what I have or have not said, I will bring you a copy of my remarks for that assurance.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Mr. Hunstead.
One question for the mayor specifically, since I used to sit in that seat. Are you having fun yet?
I regret nothing.
Neither do I.
I'm the one that asked for it.
I want to speak on two topics that are on your agenda this evening. I think both of them have already been touched upon, and I'll make note that this is the first time that I've attended a commission meeting since leaving office, because I really think that knowing the difficulty that you have in serving this many-headed monster that we call city government and appealing to the people and the staff that you have to work with, so I know of your difficulties. I want to talk rather bluntly about two items, and I'm going to be very brief. The one item is the RKG final report. And, you know, as my term as mayor, I supported outside consultants, and the reason that I did is not that I wanted to spend the money. I realized how scarce those resources were and the things that go unfunded with the city. And in answer to Dr. Williams' question about what previous administrations did, you know, I can speak to that, and quite frankly, we discussed them every budget cycle, and we just funded what we could fund. And so for years, I watched that line between expenditures' income narrow. And so I was responsible for voting in favor of the tax on insurance, not because I wanted to, but because I felt I had no alternative with the decrease in tax revenue that the city was receiving and our ever-increase in expenses. And I believe in my heart that that was the same reason that the other members of the commission at that time supported that particular increase. Then back to the outsourcing of the study that was done by RKG. What I would say, I was shocked when that study and the responsibility for it was turned over to the very organization that was being studied, and that was the EDP. And I think that was a very strategic and tactical era, and you missed an opportunity to really get independent outside alternatives. And in reading the results of the report, I really find it lacking in outcomes that offer a solution. And I would offer up to you a quote that's often attributed to Albert Einstein, although he didn't really say it. And that's the definition of insanity, where you keep doing the same thing, but you expect different results. And so I would urge you to look at the EDP with that question in mind, because it appears to me that really nothing has changed. The taking out of the CVB, taking out the Heart of Danville, those have always been essentially standalone organizations, so that's not really a significant change. And with the board independent of the only individuals that can really make a difference, and that's the elected officials, so I think you've really lost control of that board. You will never have control of that board. You will never have influence in that board, and I think it's detrimental to the people of Danville, Boyle County, for that reason. On the issue of the tax increase, I would point out the obvious corollary to the EDP and the loss of jobs. Clearly, if you go back to early 2000, 2003, and you see we still have not replaced the jobs lost from there until now, we're still down nearly 3,000 jobs. That's your lost revenue. That's the fire truck that didn't get purchased, and the many other city items that are important and that need to be done that we haven't been able to accomplish. The fallacy of putting that much tax on wages is it's an accepted that taxes create shortages in wages. So taxing the wages here in this county, you're actually going to most likely make the problem worse. And so I agree with Dr. David Williams that this is not helping us to attract and open up new jobs. I realize that 60% of our revenue currently comes from that, and cities are extremely limited in the way that they can generate revenue. But if a tax increase is absolutely required, you still have that other 40%. And so taxes overall in Boyle County, Danville, when you look around in the surrounding counties, we're still a, overall, we're a low-tax county. But we do need to bring in, and we should be doing things that incentivize the creation and bringing jobs here, not disincentivizing. And I would offer up time for any questions if you do, but with that, I return to my citizen's seat out here.
Thank you, Mayor Hunstead. Good evening, Ms. Fowler.
Good evening. Welcome back, Mrs. Cochrane, and congratulations.
Mrs. Who?
Mrs. Cochrane.
I'm sitting there going, "Who?"
I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. You've already had my comments two weeks ago, and I sent them to you to reiterate them. I believe you've been getting some input from the business community outside of this meeting. I'm not going to share the ones that were CC'd to me, that I know came to you, but I do want to make a statement that one of our business people sent, that said, "Yes, cutting taxes actually raises tax revenue, as John Kennedy proved in the early 1960s and Arthur Laffer later made famous with the Laffer Curve. The pie can increase, and therefore the tax revenue, if people think it is worth their sweat and tears, let alone their own hard-earned money betting on investment in people, equipment, development, et cetera, to grow. Most companies dropped pension plans decades ago, but the government didn't." And I know that you face major challenges. You don't have easy decisions. There are a lot of things that need to be done, but I don't think raising more taxes is the answer to that. So I'll just tell you that I've had a lot of comments in the last two weeks since I was here last, and none of them were for this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Going once, going twice, two and a half times, three, we'll move right on. Item one, you have before you the minutes from the previous June 12th meeting. Entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochrane.
It's going to be argue used to.
Well, it's probably going to remain Terry, but...
Okay. Don't confuse us. Don't confuse us. We're confused enough. Don't confuse us. We're in discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item two, you have before you the CVB budget report. Ms. Kirchner.
I'm here. The CVB Board approved our budget for the upcoming fiscal year. We're on a July 1 to June 30 fiscal calendar, so as we wrap up this fiscal year and look ahead to the next year, we have a fantastic CVB Board, one that really has their pulse in the community. They're very involved and active, so we've had a really great time planning this upcoming budget. In your packets, you have what is called a CVB priorities discussion. We started that, actually, before April, and the top portion is what the Board made. We made three categories: tourism development, community development, and things that the CVB needs to be aware of and monitor. We also took input from the RKG strategic plan. Some of those recommendations were indoor/outdoor athletic competition and sports complex, agritourism, downtown boutique hotel. And then we also spent some time with hotel property owners and managers and said, "Hey, what's working, what's not, and how can we help?" So we took that planning process, and it advised our current budget. So you'll see that our budget has categories, then, that match those headings. So we have a tourism development category, a community sponsorship, and advertising, which is our main, marketing, which is our main mission. So basically, what we did was I showed you kind of where we were in 2015 up through 2017, so it just kind of breaks out the different categories of how we allocated money. Some things didn't change at all. Where you see a zero, it's really just because it's tucked in somewhere else, it's a little bit of shuffling around. But, so the majority of our money, I'm happy to say, is going towards advertising and marketing this year. The CVB, since 2012, in the past five years, has grown 55%, which is great. And to that end, I would say that the CVB is a vessel that collects the tax and packages the money and redistributes it to the community into marketing, but it's not something the CVB could ever do if it wasn't for the great community that we have and all the great stuff we get to show off and sell. So really, I'm here to say thank you for making my job easy to everybody. And if you have any questions about how we allocated funds, I guess I would point out we do have, we set aside $10,000 this year to start a savings plan for paying for wayfinding signage. We're very happy that, and feel very fortunate, the city has taken that on. We know it's a priority, so we want to help and partner however we can. I guess, and I'll point out to you, in your packets, too, you also have a newly, a new community funding application. So if anybody requests some of that $20,000, they have to submit one of these. Having a lawyer as a board chair has been really useful. So if you have any questions for me about the budget, if not, I'll let Mark say a few things.
Any questions for Ms. Kirchner? Thank you.
Did you want to say anything?
No. Basically, just thank you all for the support you've had in the past, and I know it'll continue in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Happy early 65th birthday.
Nice job, y'all. That's definitely an area that we're winning in, and we appreciate it, all the work you guys do.
Item three, you have the RKG final report in your packet. This is, the motion tonight is to vote on acceptance of this report. It is not necessarily to vote on the agreement of the contents, but we have funded it, they have met their contractual obligations, so as a matter of protocol, we need to accept that. Do you hear a motion?
I move. Do we accept RKG final report as presented?
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
I'll second. I appreciate your clarification of what we are voting on as well.
You're welcome, Commissioner Cottle. Thank you for the second. We're in discussion. I think we all have a lot of reading and digestion to do here. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item four is a subject of 311 West Main Street, a discussion and an update. Mr. Scott, you going to lead that discussion?
Well, actually, I think everyone in the chambers and the commission is aware of the recent developments at 311 West Main, which were the partial collapse of an interior floor. We have had code enforcement make an inspection of that property following that event, and I think Bridget Lester is prepared to make a more complete report to the commission
Sorry, down in the back. On 6/22, we did get a call that night that there had been collapse in the building, and so we started looking at that with codes and the police department and the fire department. And then the next morning, we, Tom Roach and the fire marshal and the fire chief and the building inspector, Robert Hanlon, met the next morning to go into an inspection of the building. And you have in front of you a report from the building inspector who was there after they evaluated the building, which said that approximately 60% of the building was in dilapidated condition. The remaining 40% appeared structurally sound and posed no immediate problem. The 60% that's in deplorable condition was the rear portion of the building that had suffered severe water damage due to the roof being in disrepair. Over time, water had entered the building freely and had rotted the frame and flooring joists to where the collapse was the result. The ground floor consisted of walls that were constructed to form buildings and were built within the existing space, but they weren't attached to the ceiling or walls of the original building. of the original building. We've taken photographs, and Earl has looked at the building with, as well as a structural engineer, has looked at that building. We're waiting on a report from that. We have issued a notice of inspection to the property owners, which is Harvey and Ann Jaeger-McCrossky. So they have, due to the damage, the fire chief has closed the built structure off to anyone being in the building because of the dangerous situation. The fire marshal and the building inspector were there, and so we have given them 14 days to present a demolition plan prepared by a structural engineer licensed in Kentucky and to apply for a demolition permit, and 30 days to commence demolition, which would be July 23rd. And I'll let Earl or any other person want to tag into anything you might want to say there, but I answer any questions you might have. Earl, you got anything you want to say? Okay.
So the building then is beyond repairs? Is that the gist of the report? If you can't get in it to work on it?
This, well, we're not letting it, there's no one allowed in there until we get a structural engineer's report to show us anything differently.
Okay, I got you.
Because anything being done to that building and a structural engineer would not show how to repair could cause further damage to the building.
Could any determination be made on how it's affecting its neighbors?
Earl, that's part of the structural engineer report?
I think, if I may interrupt, I think prior to receiving any reports, I think it'd be premature for staff to speculate on an issue that may have liability concerns on the property owners. So I think this is, by and large, an administrative issue. I think this should be deemed as a report to the commission on what is an issue of concern, but I'd be hesitant to enter into a question-and-answer session in public.
Okay, sorry.
Anything else?
That's all I had.
Thank you.
So we'll see you in two weeks.
I don't mean to pontificate, but...
That's a good word.
Yeah, how you like that? How you like that? Don't ask me to spell it. But I do want the public to understand that this commission is very, very interested in the outcome of this property. We're concerned about the integrity of our downtown, and I think to the person, this commission is willing to assist in any way possible to see a positive end to this situation. And I respect our council's counseling, but I don't want it to go off as if we're just not interested and we're just going to rubber stamp something as it comes through. Is that a fair, you all agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. With your all's approval, I would like to suggest that we make an adjustment in our order of the meeting, because I think it'll be more productive for all of us if we move items five and six down to a, on down after we have a discussion about the budget. Isn't that correct, Mr. Scott?
Yes, I would request that we revisit the budget prior to considering the tax ordinance.
Is that okay with the commission?
So we're going to move into the city manager report?
No, city, to the city budget discussion would be my request.
So we're going to flip six, five and six?
Right.
Oh, I thought you were going to move them to the end of the whole meeting.
No, 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 no.
Well, that...
No, I'm not looking to get shot here. Is that okay with everybody? Okay. With that said, let's go with, item six is item five, and this is in regard to the annual budget. This would be the second reading, and I guess Robert's Rules of Order would suggest or would command that we have a motion, and the motion can either die for lack of a second or the motion can be seconded, at which point we will then be in discussion. And it's that discussion portion that I think is going to be productive for us.
Well, I will take care of that for you. And before I make a motion, I'd like to just go ahead and say that I'm opposed to the budget as presented. So I move for approval of the second reading of ordinance 1895, the 2017, 2018 annual budget.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Atkins. Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Well, I'll second for discussion purposes.
We have a second. We are in discussion. Mr. Scott?
Mr. Mayor and Commission, upon advice of council, these two topics are, of course, intertwined, and it's sort of the chicken and the egg question of do we approve a budget without appropriations, or do we appropriate money to approve the budget? So I guess procedurally, I would like for both of these topics to be considered at the same time, and you can decide which you wish to vote on first and second, if you want to vote on one first and second. But I would like just to revisit the budget first as a background information for you, and you can then decide how to proceed with council's advice.
And this is one of those issues too, where Robert's Rules of Order should be used as a guide to you, but I think is not applicable. In this case, I would remove the motion and the second and simply discuss the items contemporaneously, and then you can decide how to move after having a healthy discussion on both items. We're not bound by Robert's Rules of Orders. They're meant to be a guide, and in this case, they seem to somewhat cripple the conversation, and that is not the intention of them. And my advice would be to not follow them in this situation or suspend them.
Would Commissioner Cochran like to remove her second?
I would graciously do that, taking advice of, taking advice of council, and thanks for my new name tonight, too.
So will I.
All right. Would that little matter clear it up?
I'm hyped for me to do it.
Well, let's talk about the proposed budget that I presented to you in revised form the last time on June the 9th. In that transmittal letter, I mentioned and perhaps emphasized that in order to implement the continuation of existing services as well as implement new and essential projects, that additional revenue was essential to doing those two things. Now, we have all had a lot of conversation with regard to do we have to do everything at once? On the other hand, if in fact it takes a long time, as it does in city government, to plan for improvements, sometimes they come at a time when you might wish to spread those out. But for the benefit of the audience, I will say that in the last transmittal letter, and we went through great detail of this several times, we talked about in the next fiscal year that spans two calendar years, for efficiency of a bond issue to fund what we deem to be essential projects, we were contemplating a bond issue of $10 million in calendar year 2017, or the first half of our next fiscal year, to fund waterline improvements to our industrial foundation, to continue the success of our existing expansion of industries out there and to attract others, as well as to make improvements in our system down to Perrville, which greatly needs improvements. We mentioned the fact that that waterline improvement is a $1.9 million improvement, essentially, and that we received from the federal government short of $1 million to help us with that project, some $950,000, as I recall in round terms. The other large component of that $10 million bond issue contemplated later this year was for implementation of our energy improvement projects. And I've made the point several times previously, that like any homeowner or any business, there comes a point in time when your energy usage is so great due to obsolete equipment, you're paying more as a taxpayer and as a community if you don't step up and take advantage of legislation that allows you to partner with the private sector, make the capital improvements, absorb those costs over time, and be guaranteed a net savings in the process. We spent a year and a half analyzing all of our energy usage from parks to city hall to waterline pump stations to parking garage and others. And we have concluded on many different occasions, following hours of meetings, that those projects were worthwhile. They would benefit our business, benefit our residential residents. Do you like a million green energy efficient? So we agreed to do that. That requires money to pay back a bond issue that we may borrow to accomplish that. The second part of our contemplated bond issue in the second half of the next fiscal year was thought to be in the general range of $7.5 million. That was for replacement of our fire station and for acquisition of a fire hook-and-ladder truck that's essential to every resident and every business in this community, achieving lower insurance premiums as a result of the fire suppression rating we're able to achieve through the ISO grading schedule by having proper manning, proper equipment. So those are the two largest elements of our capital improvements in the next year, and I haven't had anyone suggest to me that they're not needed or that they're not worthwhile or that we should further postpone them. We've postponed addressing the fire station for years. This came up in 2004, I believe, as part of our initial capital study. It's now 2017. Our cost for energy usage, you know, we have mined the benefit of the existing apparatus we use past the point of usefulness. And so those projects, the commission has deemed, and I have recommended, that you implement. That again is the largest portion of the expenditures. In the year ahead, we've continued our essential services. Nobody has suggested we cut back on current services that are being provided. We have cut back on some of the funding of community agencies. We've continued funding of our, pretty much at a flat level, of our existing city-county partnerships, the EDP included, as well as parks and airport activities. We've looked hard at every expenditure. And so we also considered the merits of the request made to us by our city's largest single employer, the hospital, to, on behalf of all our citizens, step up and do what was reported is already being done in about 50% of our communities in Kentucky, and that is provide medical dispatch services so that if you have a coronary event, you've got an increased chance of survival by having detailed instructions given over the phone prior to your being transported by the Boil County ambulance service to the local hospital. That would benefit our citizens, benefit their outcome, because our survival rates are represented to be extremely low under those conditions. And it would also benefit the hospital by allowing them to achieve certification as one of those elements being provided that improves hospital outcomes. So we discussed that issue, our 911 funding generally, how to deal with the increased cost of doing that. We've had discussions with our county partners on that. And so that is the newest request made of the city commission to do that. After soul-searching of how are we going to fund these matters, you know, I've looked at those tax rates in effect in neighboring communities. And we've said in this commission on multiple times, cities have very few cards to play when it comes to revenue sources. We do not have, as many of our neighbors have, the authority to levy a restaurant tax, which just the words of that causes some business owners in our community pause because they may not favor that form of taxation. But the fact of the matter is that in many other communities, that is a significant generator of revenue to fund local programs. Don't have that choice. We may get it, we may not, but we don't have it now. So we looked at the other remaining sources of revenue that we have, and those are the occupational net profits, those are the property taxes, those are insurance premium taxes, and the alcohol regulatory fee. Legislation passed two years ago in Frankfurt restricts our ability to increase alcohol regulatory fees because they have to be tied on to direct expenditures made the prior fiscal year for regulatory enforcement efforts documented by what you have spent. So that is not a productive or new source of revenue. Property taxes are limited since 1979 to an increase of 4% a year without going to a vote of the people. A 4% increase in our community produces the grand sum of about $65,000 or $70,000, depending on the mix of properties at that time. It would be, in my judgment, highly unlikely to be able to levy any property tax rate that would pass a referendum anywhere close to the magnitude needed to address services. Our insurance premium tax, we raised that two years ago to meet the average then in effect in other communities of 8%. I mentioned previously that some of our neighbors, such as Harrisburg, has a higher rate than we do on that, plus the restaurant tax that we don't have. But even that tax rate, if we raised it a couple of percent, we would only get $200,000 more in projected revenue. So again, not a deep well when it comes to meeting long unaddressed needs, even if we've tried over a number of years to get to the point of addressing them. So bear with me. To the remaining source, occupational and net profits, we heard tonight, and it's not a bad idea of consideration, that we talk about how we can more effectively merge or consolidate governmental operations. Sounds good on paper. Lexington Fayette Urban County Government is a first example of that in Kentucky. They have a lot of efficiency in operations. Their occupational and net profits tax each currently are 2.25%. So while they may provide additional consolidation of services, their track record doesn't show that they reduce rates in doing that. Looking at the other cities who might be competitors business-wise to Danville, take Frankfurt, both occupational and net profits tax are currently and have been for years since at least 2014, 1.95% each. You can take other, a number of other cities, Paducah, from Ashland to many others that are at 2% or in that vicinity. So they too have struggled, I'm sure, with the need to produce revenue, and they go to the well that is available to do that. They don't want to go there, no more than we want to, but you have a choice: cut services or increase fees revenue. And having had no one tell me not to continue services, not to address those needs that have been on our doorstep since 2004 or before, or got there incrementally over the last decade or so, and as the former mayor pointed out, as we haven't had an increase or even a recovery of jobs to generate money, we are left with few choices. So even so, I would suggest that the city commission delay tonight consideration of implementation of the emergency medical dispatch service. Frankly, it was going to be a challenge to implement that in the next fiscal year. We have a tall order in terms of upgrading that equipment, which is, we've heard from our IT director, is obsolete, and we can't get parts currently, or it's great difficult in doing so, to go to the next generation of equipment where we can receive text and video as a way of seeking assistance. And we have many people in our community who are deaf, and that would be a benefit to them and to others who might be in situations that are all too familiar around the country in terms of shootings. And it's, our equipment has run its course. So that cost is in the budget, and it will be in the neighborhood if a half a million dollars... dollars or more. And the implementation of that and a more efficient arrangement is going to consume us at least through April. So, we will be, we would have struggled frankly in terms of implementing medical dispatch next fiscal year anyway. So, my suggestion to you, if you follow that line of reasoning and agree with it, is that we do not enact the recommended 2.0% occupational license tax, but rather reduce that to a rate of 1.9%, which is under many of our surrounding communities and will give us sufficient money to pay back the bonds that we need for other programs. I remain of the recommendation that we need to continue with the recommended increase in the net profits tax to the rate of 1.75 as previously presented for all the reasons previously presented and repeated tonight. So, if you accept that recommendation in the budget, that would mean that we would expend in the budget, and I think under tab six, you have the revised numbers that would reflect the revised budget, which if you do, if you take action to support these two recommendations in terms of the tax ordinance and the budget change, and consider giving first reading to those tonight, we would need to meet again to give second reading to both the ordinance, tax ordinance, and the budget approval. And I would get you the full details of that budget approval prior to that next second meeting. The total appropriation as revised would be $52,164,722, and that, again, is basically deleting our commitment to initiate inception of medical dispatch services in the next fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. I assume, and I think it's important that the public knows that we have already eliminated the certified local government position or the preservation officer.
Yes, we have no intent to fill that with a staff position. We have retained, I believe, $30,000 for the potential of contracting part-time to have the benefits of someone who is qualified to continue to maintain that status of certified local government in accordance with our current agreement to do that. Remain certified, in other words.
Just want the public to understand that.
Well, and I want the public to understand that we appreciate the timeliness of your concerns and your calls, your emails, and your face-to-face professional conversations that we've encountered over the last two weeks. And I want to just toss out to the audience that I'm aware of the three possible options for us at this time. The first option is to stay where we are and have no tax increase on the occupational license tax or the net profit tax. Another option that has been suggested is to go from 1.5 to 1.75, or to go from 1.25 to 1.50 for the net profit tax. Or, the third option would be to approve the budget and the tax increase as presented. So, there are some options on the table for us. And to my surprise, I'm really tickled pink and happy about the number of folks who said to me the last two weeks, yes, vote for the increase as presented. I've really been tickled, really been surprised because I've not heard from anyone who said that to me. Okay, so that's why I said at the start that I'll make a motion to discuss these items, but I've have a different stance after two weeks of public input. It's been very, very well received, and I've listened very attentively, and that's where I am. I'm looking at options right now. And Michelle, I'm willing to buy you the pizza and whatever your favorite drink is to see how these budgets would check out, would shake out at what staff would suggest included in a new budget that shows no increased revenue for next year, or what staff would suggest be included in the budget if we went with half of the recommended suggestions in the budget in these two proposals. So, I'm on the fence right now, looking at the three options. And since we're back, staff recommended to have a first reading tonight. I'm always opposed to another meeting, but I guess in this case, if I don't like the third option or the option that's presented tonight, then I'm saying, yes, I'm willing to come up, come back for another meeting, and I'm also saying, yes, I'm willing to hear from the citizens of this city and county. Because I've been approached by both, and that's been good, to hear from both city and county folks, because what we do in the city affects our citizens in the county, and what, you know, they do in the county affects us in the city as well. So, I'm really open to hearing lots and lots of more input. The most effective input that I've heard, though, in the last two weeks have been for folks who I can look at and tell make less than $20 an hour. Those are the folks who really have had the most impact on me. Those folks who are out there and making $50 an hour and above, you've had your say. Leave me alone. Let me hear from the rest of the citizens. And I say that very seriously. I really would like, if we go beyond this for another meeting, to continue hearing from those citizens who I feel would drastically be impacted by, and I'm using Mr. Williams' numbers, 33% to 40%, and those who will be affected by so many issues, so many issues being addressed at one time by one budget. So, that's where I am.
Good deal. So, Commissioner Terry, you guys got your signs wrong. Commissioner Atkins?
[laughter]
Is anybody, is, yeah, any discussion here? You know, one of the things, one of your options was try to meet halfway, especially in the occupational license tax at 1.75%. But I don't know that Ron and Michelle and the rest of staff have been able to get it to that point, although I do have a couple more I really appreciate you looking at. Looking at the emergency medical dispatch, because I do think we need a longer conversation there, and I think you're very right to go there, and you also did address certified local government. So, we talked about the fire station, and we certainly don't want to, you know, prolong that anymore. How long has the Second Street Bridge been an issue, and can that be prolonged? That's a, we have fire trucks on both sides. Maybe our chief can answer that a little bit. Because those are expenses in there, correct?
Well, it's $200,000 expense. I mean, it's a safety issue. It cannot carry the weight for a fire truck, and so, it relates to the safety of whoever's on the other side of the bridge and the additional time it has to go. And I'd say there's a liability issue there, too. If the city is made aware of an issue of fire suppression and doesn't provide a path to someone's home, I'd say we have a liability for failure to address, plus there is the potential of some collapse of that bridge.
Okay.
So, I don't think it can be, it can or should be postponed for those two reasons.
And Commissioners, let me remind us that we're not to be involved in the day-by-day operations of the city, that we can make suggestions and send them back to staff, and I think it's appropriate for staff then to take what we offer as a way of financial support for the next year to bring to us the recommendations about what gets prioritized, number one, number two, number three. Someone in the city gets paid, you know, the big bucks do that kind of work for us. Let's be careful about us not getting too much into the daily operations of this thing.
Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Commissioner Terry Atkins, for that, that comment, which is very valid. But let me say that the staff has worked
Oh, I know.
Already, looking at many different options, and you have before you a recommendation tonight that I would sincerely request your consideration and approval. There is no way that staff is aware of to meet our bond obligation to do the heavy lifting for the major projects short of the amount of revenue recommended to pay back those bonds. If you're saying you don't want to raise the taxes as recommended, you're saying you don't want a new fire station, you don't want energy efficiency, and it's a vote for inefficiency in terms of increased cost going forward, and so on. There is very little flexibility left after reducing that amount down to the amount recommended in before tonight. So, unless you want to revisit all of those issues and go into some extended discussions, which we're happy to do for understanding, but I don't think you'll come with different outcomes as a result of doing so.
So, what you're suggesting is the recently amended proposal that would eliminate from the budget the $300,000 line item for emergency medical dispatch and the $80,000 line item for certified local government personnel, but leaving $30,000 in there to contract for that service.
Yes, sir.
So, total savings are there, $350,000.
Well, I want to remain professional, but the budget that I received over the weekend was for $52,396,000. The budget with the 1.9 is for $52,164,000. Now, that really doesn't cause for much decrease in revenue at all. So, I'm still not convinced that, well, okay, here's what you're saying to me here. I vote not to raise taxes at all, so I'm voting to close down the city of Danville. Are you saying that to me? I don't think so. So, if we only have the current income that we have right now, commission has decided that, then staff's got to come back with a balanced budget to use that money. If we go to 1.75, 1.50, staff's got to come back with a balanced budget to use that money. Just like you presented the 2.0 to 1.75. You've got a balanced budget presented to us using that new revenue. And if that's the only budget you can present to us, then why are we having all this discussion? Regardless of what the citizens are seeing, if this is the only budget you can present to me, then why are we having all this discussion?
It seems to me that, to follow up on that, if I may, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm sure you will. Our challenge is to take what has been proposed and determine amongst ourselves, is that necessary, and is it necessary now?
Yeah.
And is it the right thing to do for this community?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the way, that's my filter.
I agree with you, yes.
That's my filter.
Yeah, I agree.
And I'm sure that
Did I say I agree with you?
Hmm? Yes, you have to.
Okay. Well, it's a serious time.
Yeah, it is serious.
Yeah.
I think what you say is right on it. Also, something we hadn't talked about is, you know, going forward with, provided we funded, go forward with the EDP plan to give it a little time to work. We don't, we don't have any idea how well that works yet, because we've not, it's never been, I don't know, it's never been supported from top to bottom, I'll say. It's had sporadic support, but it seems to me like right now is the first time it's had what I would call consistent support. So, I'm anxious to see how that does, and that, you know, every job we get is less taxes we have to, have to raise, so.
Which sort of brings up the question that if jobs increase in this community, and we have the option somewhere down the road of the restaurant tax, could we revisit where we're at with some of our other taxes in the city?
Yeah.
I think we asked, I asked one time how many jobs it'd take to offset this occupational license tax increase. It was 2,000 and some single number, I think Michelle gave me, but somewhere around 2,000, which is a lot of employees, but I mean, it's something that we can set a goal for, naturally.
I would certainly agree that the issue of taxes and revenue can be revisited if we get additional choices of revenue sources. One of the challenges with the restaurant tax, as I think we all know, is that under the legislation as was last drafted, the monies are not all received by the city, I think 25% guaranteed. And monies that are received by the city are limited to economic development. That's a broad category. But we would have to examine all of that and see what mix or reduction could be possible. Certainly, if we've got more choices, you could lower, you would think, some sources of taxation.
I'm getting ready to say something. Okay. Well, I did some quick math here. Between the final amounts, it's $232,000. Just because I need to look at this on the other end of that, how much additional revenue were we getting with the proposed tax increase? And then, what's the difference between that?
Clarity.
I don't, yes, I don't have that in front of me, I'm sorry. What is the difference in that regard instead of talking about the whole budget?
Let me ask Michelle, who has her computer there as well. I could tell you the number differences, but I'll ask her just to respond.
Which number are you referring to?
I'm comparing the two.
Where we're going to, to where the new proposal is?
Yes.
Yeah.
And overall, the tax increases would cause about $2.3 million increase altogether.
And that's the
The
Raising to 2% and
And 1.75.
Okay. And if we do the, if we do the other, the 1.9 and the 1.75, what's the difference?
About $100,000.
Plus, so we have $100,000 there, and then we're eliminating the emergency dispatch?
Yeah, we eliminated the salaries out of there that we had in there. We didn't have a full year in this year, anyway. So, we eliminated all that out of the salary portion of the budget.
And we haven't completely eliminated the preservation committee, but again, I will say
We took it down to $25,000. But that was done prior to this budget, that was done on the last budget.
Okay. Well, still, history shows with our CLG status, the most amount we have gotten in the last five years is $10,000. I do not see any reason to spend $30,000 to receive $10,000 or less. So, I'm not, you know, I am in favor of preservation, but it just doesn't make sense to spend that money if we're not, like I said at the last meeting, you know, is there money coming down the line somewhere that we don't know about, or can we be guaranteed somehow that our, that we're going to get a return on that?
Well, the return is in more than just monetary terms, in terms of assistance from Frankfurt dealing with preservation issues. We have need for that, obviously, in our community. It's a identity our community has with history and being a city of first, and so, it's not all about just getting grant return dollar for dollar, but the ability to have assistance on a whole host of issues administratively has value as well.
But we don't know that for sure.
We know it because we interact
It's kind of like the economic development. We don't know for sure how that's going to work.
Can I quantify it? Not really, unless I looked at over the past year or five, the number of hours we've spent on the phone or visits, or their help in holding preservation meetings here to on the phone or visits, or their help in holding preservation meetings here to talk about creation of a revolving loan fund, to have people come in from Savannah and share experiences in terms of how it's worked in that city. It's a broader issue than just getting a grant back for the money.
Okay. That answers part of my question. And, you know, I don't agree with every single thing in this budget, that being one of them, and also the agency allocations. I think we should start reducing those 20 to 25%, and I've said that before. But I do believe that this new proposed budget maybe gives people what they're asking for. It's a more incremental increase. We probably were going to get the emergency dispatch implemented in this year anyway, because we do have some issues to work out with the county on that. So I think maybe this is what the people have asked us to do.
So with that said, staff, give us some numbers that accomplish what we feel are essential minus the EMD and the reduction in certified local government. What's that number?
I would say you have that tonight in terms of the ordinance 18...
No, I'm not talking about dollar amount. I'm talking about a percent amount.
1.9.
But what I heard you say a minute ago is if we reduce it from 2 to 1.9, that's a savings of $100,000.
Yep.
Well, if we're going to reduce the revenues, I'm sorry, if we're going to do expenditures, $350,000, and I'd like to see us...
We reduced the expenditures, $120,000 in salaries, $77,000 with taxes included and retirement, and $77,000 on the medical insurance side was taken out of the budget. So that ends up being $207,000 altogether that we reduced out of the budget. We took $100,000 off of the revenue.
Y'all understand that?
Yeah.
I'm glad you did, because I didn't get that.
300 minus 100 is 200.
No, what that means is that...
Essentially.
Here's what I understand. Going from 2.0 down to 1.9...
Right.
And staying at 1.75 would generate $2.1 million in new revenue. Michelle got that puzzled look on her face back there.
I didn't follow your math.
Okay. If we stay at 2.0 with the occupational license tax...
Uh-huh.
And stay at the 1.75 with the net profit, that gives us that first number.
2.3.
Yeah, $2.3 million in new money.
Right.
And if we go from 2.0 in occupational license tax down to 1.9, it saves us $120,000.
$100,000.
Okay, so the new income from these two taxes becomes $2.2 million, not 2.3. So from 1.9 to 2.0, that's a doing thing for the guy out there making $10 an hour. He's still going to have to go...I'm sorry. Yeah, but it's really a doing thing.
Well, that kind of brings me back to your point earlier. I don't think I've heard from anyone who makes $10 an hour.
No.
Just...
Well, put it out there.
On appearance.
Put it out there. Tell them you want them, give them your phone number.
I would love to hear from the people making $10 an hour. I would like to know what they think, because...
And notice I said...
Everyone I've heard from, I'm pretty sure, makes over $50,000. That's just a guess.
Well, I agree with you. I've heard from a lot of those folks, too, and that's okay.
And I would like to hear from under 50. I'd like to hear from somebody who makes less than $30,000.
Yeah. Let me put it to you this way. If we take these two new tax rates, well, just the one, let's just deal with the occupational license taxes, that's really going to get to my buddies, the folks who live on my side tracks, okay?
Oh, quit it.
Well, just be serious about it.
I'm kidding you.
We go from 1.5 to 2.0, and that guy makes $20,000 a year. Tell me what that guy's going to pay in occupational license tax, just for a whole year, and then tell me what the difference is from this year versus that next year. See, that's where I get my impact. If it affects that person's salary by, say, 5%, but it only affects mine by 0.1%, you know, it's a major difference. Because that guy's on the lower end of scale, and what we're doing right now is going to sort of the biggest burden.
I'm pretty sure we have a lot of public works employees that probably make $9 an hour.
Yes, ma'am. City and county employees, well, all the city employees, right, yeah, I agree. Well, you said you hadn't heard from anyone, so, okay.
I haven't.
You just opened up the door, because I have, so, okay.
Commissioner, on that point, to be clear, the 1.9% recommended rate for an individual earning $45,000 a year, that would be an increased annual amount of payment of $200.
Increase?
$200 annually.
Increase?
Increase over existing.
But what would the total amount be?
I don't have my math here or my calculator here, but I'm talking about the change would be $200 more.
Yeah, I understand the change, but see, well, let's put it this way. In 2018, I'm not going to just pay the change. I'm going to pay the current rate plus the change, and that's where I keep telling them I think it's going to hit people that I hadn't thought about.
So let me ask this, Commissioner Atkins, to your point. Other than the emergency medical dispatch and the certified local government, are there other items that you would propose be eliminated out of the suggested budget?
See, I don't take a stance as an elected official that I'm required, expected to do that.
With that said, then you're accepting what staff is saying they deem as necessary.
Anytime staff brings a proposal like this, we have, what, three options? Vote it up, vote it down, or...
Send it back.
Get rid of whoever sent it to us. Oh, I'm just kidding, no. No, you're right, no. This is really not our budget. This is staff's budget. It's not Ron Scott's budget. This is the staff's budget. It's everybody put together a plan to use the money to keep the city operating. I'm not pointing fingers at any one person. I think it's the staff, and I say that very broadly.
So you're saying that...
All I'm saying is this, here's what I'm saying. If we really have to raise taxes right now, and, you know, two weeks ago, I was pretty much convinced that we really have to do it. I still am, but I'm not convinced we have to do it this much all at one time, because what, I did it two years ago, right?
Do you have a suggestion?
Oh, I gave it already, yeah.
Which is?
Do nothing? Go have?
No, no, no.
I do all this.
Now, you got...I'm looking for an answer here. I'm looking for some direction that we can begin to take here.
Oh. So maybe I'm not going to put the number out there by myself. I will if I'm forced to, yeah.
Well...
Bet you voted down, but I'll put it out there.
I'm not sure if I'm looking for a number here, but a lot of the terms that I've heard in the last two weeks, two terms, actually, are the city needs to eliminate excessive spending.
Yeah.
And we need to find alternative resources.
Yeah, that's right. And nobody's...
And I think this is where the mayor's going with his point. We have thrown those terms around, but no one has been specific. So if anyone can go through this budget, which we've all been through it, staff's been through it, we've been through it, forwards, backwards, sideways, and find where there is excessive spending, and specifically tell me what those things are. And... Hold on. What are alternative sources are besides the five sources of revenues? Do we eliminate the community agency allocations completely?
Some will say yes to that.
That's about, what, $200,000?
$225,000.
Should we eliminate EDP? Yes, some would say yes to that.
Some would say yes?
That's why I say it's got to be staff, because if you ask the citizens out there, I'm going to tell you eliminate the stuff I don't use and stuff I don't think's appropriate. They're not going to look at the whole picture.
So do we wait for the fire house to fall in?
No.
Do we wait for Second Street Bridge to collapse when there's a school bus going across it?
See, that's where my trust is in staff.
Or anyone?
No, I don't think that. I think staff's going to come back with some priorities that are really...well, all these things are necessary. I'm on that same page, okay? But now, I'm going to do some work at my house this summer, and I got to prioritize which ones I can do.
Exactly.
Because I know the money that you all been giving me, you know, you pay me a whole bunch of money to be the city commissioner for it, so that money's only going to go so far. So I got a budget what I'm going to do this summer.
Mr. Scott, is there anything that you...
Well, you ought to do that, too.
Is there anything further that you and your staff feel can be reduced?
And City Manager, can I add one piece of clarity possibly to the conversation that may help the commission? Your role in the budget process and the law is clear. You presented a budget. You vote to approve or reject.
Yep.
You lack authority to modify.
Yep.
So it is not in your prerogative or authority under Kentucky revised statute to offer modifications to budgets that are presented.
That's right.
So your comments can be viewed as considerations by staff in resubmitting a budget to you, but you can't reject a budget with instructions to amend in a certain way. Now, you can keep rejecting budgets.
Right.
However, you lack authority to instruct the city manager or staff to revise or craft a budget in a certain way. So I understand your attempt to look at the budget and say, well, what do we want to cut? But that's really outside of your purview. I know it's in your discussions and in your mind, but I just want to make it clear, you do lack authority to offer those modifications.
And Mr. Dexter, remind us all about the deadline when this thing has to be settled, resolved?
You're required to have a budget that goes into effect by the end of June. It's effective July 1. So you're required to pass a balanced budget, which requires two readings prior to the end of this month.
So Counselor, let me finish, if I may, my line of questioning. Mr. Scott, is there anything further that you and your staff feel could be or should be eliminated? Yes or no? You've offered up two things.
I have made the recommended changes, and so the budget is submitted as recommended.
So, thank you. That said...
Could I ask one more question related? Just so I'll know, how much difference would 200 new jobs make in...
Second, how many...
Right.
How much they get paid? I mean...
Say $15 now.
If you had 200 new jobs at what?
$15 an hour or something.
How much?
15, just say.
15 times 2080 times 200 times .01. At what rate? The rate we're at now?
Yes.
That'd be another $114,000.
No, it wouldn't be, it'd be 96 at the rate we're at now, 93.6 at the rate we're at right now.
And the reason I use that is because I think we all got the...
Sorry.
Sorry.
We all got the email from...
She ain't like your numbers.
From Jody that had some pretty good news in it. Nothing's set in stone yet. There's no names to go with it yet. Sorry, Ben, but so just throwing that out there for consideration.
So I think my job is to keep things moving along. So we've got a recommendation in front of us. Do I hear a motion to accept the recommendation?
Was this the new recommendation?
It's the new recommendation.
Yeah, I'll move to accept ordinance 1895 as it has been revised.
Well, I have a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Sears. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry.
We should clarify, this is a first reading. Your agenda says it's a second reading. It is a first reading.
Of the revised budget. Any discussion?
I'm going to lick that cap.
Seeing none, Chair will call the question, and I'll ask the city clerk to begin with me.
Mayor Parrish?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
There's a lot I like about it, but no.
Commissioner Sears?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
No.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. We'll move right on to the...
Can we make another motion on that?
I think we have accomplished items five and six.
No.
No, you've accomplished item number six, but not number five.
Go back to item five then, please.
Oh.
Okay. We get the budget now.
Yeah, yeah. It's under tab five. Ordinance number 1894, amending the Chapter 16 Taxation of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dammel.
And Mayor, this, too, will be a first reading.
Okay, I'm confused a bit.
So this is for the 1.9? Or do we need to pass this and have a discussion and...
I think we're going to move to look at the ordinance number 1894 as revised, a first reading, correct? That's what we did with the last one.
That's correct. This would put the occupational licensing tax at 1.9%.
So it needs to be changed.
And the net profits at 1.75%. Again, a first reading of ordinance number 1894.
Do I hear a motion?
I moved on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Discussion?
I'd like to offer a friendly motion, friendly amendment, I'm sorry, to take the occupational license tax to 1.75 and the net profit tax to 1.50.
Counselor? I'm not sure that that's in our purview, is it? Correct me if I'm wrong.
On this tax, you can offer amendments.
Okay.
So a motion has been made and seconded. There's an amendment on the floor that has not had a second yet, but if seconded, would need to be voted on prior to the consideration of the original motion.
You're speaking of his friendly amendment?
His friendly amendment.
Which has not received a second. I got you. Okay.
I will second his friendly amendment with a friendly second.
We are in discussion. Mr. Scott, you have something to say?
I believe it would be useful for the City Commission to understand the revenue implications of what that amendment would do in terms of production of revenue in the next fiscal year.
Yeah, it seems we just shot the last 30 minutes of discussion in the head, because we've been presented...
Yeah, I thought we was doing this for first itself, but...
I thought we just passed the budget based on...
1.9 and 1.75.
1.9 and 1.75.
That's correct.
Well, you're seeing the conundrum of the risk of passing a budget with appropriations prior to you appropriating the funds.
Yeah, that's right. I thought we were doing this for first one yourself, but I'm mistaken.
Let's...there's been amendment that has been made and seconded. It should be debated. Your conversation about it can be considered, and depending on the vote of that matter, you may need to reconsider another motion on an ordinance that you had a first reading on as the prior item.
Well, we have a second on that friendly amendment, so we are in discussion.
I was going to...I wanted to hear...
I called for a question on the amendment myself. We've had enough discussion already.
Question's been called on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment signify, but well, I guess we... All in favor of the amendment signify, but well, I guess we have to do a roll call on that?
Not on the amendment you don't, not required to, however, I would recommend it.
So be it. Wherever you want.
Mayor Parris?
No.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Seres?
No.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
No.
I detect a pattern here. Um, now, we're back to our original motion, which is to accept the occupational tax rate at 1.9 and the net profits at 1.75. We're in discussion on that subject.
Call for the question on that subject, too.
Question's been called.
Second.
And seconded. I believe we're ready to vote.
Mayor Parris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
No.
Commissioner Seres?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Are we voting to close discussion or voting on the...
Voting on the ordinance.
On the ordinance.
I will know then.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
All right. I believe we need to have a date for a second reading.
What is it that we have passed that is a first reading?
1.9 and 1.75.
That did pass?
That did.
Okay.
Hard keep score.
I can't believe I'm actually ahead of you on this one. That's, that's amazing. That's a first. Write that down. I'm glad it happened in public.
Well, okay. We still have the issue of the budget, which did not pass, did it?
Yes, it did.
Both revised ordinances passed tonight. Your revised budget.
Both revisions passed.
Okay.
So, those were both first readings?
They were both first readings.
That's right. So, we have to have a...
Forgive me, I was a step or two behind you.
That's not, that's not your style, sir. That's not your style.
We'll circle back around.
I don't know why.
So, we need to have a date?
I would suggest, because we have to get proper newspaper notice 24 hours, that we meet on Wednesday at our usual time at 5:30 of this week.
Okay.
We are under time constraints, not only for passage of the budget and our tax ordinance, but also to notify Frankfurt of any changes that may be adopted, so that those can be done in a timely way. So, I would hope that on Wednesday, we will continue the progress we've made tonight to conclude these two items.
Dexter, Wednesday?
No, this is Wednesday.
And, City Manager, I'd like to clarify that the publication of the newspaper isn't required. If it can get in by that time, then so be it, but it's not required. The, the meeting notice will be posted at City Hall, and that's sufficient for a special call meeting. In case the publication does not happen, the validity of that meeting's not caught into question.
I, I will not be here Wednesday, but I'm not going to add much to the discussion.
Me neither, so they'll leave it to you three.
You won't be here Wednesday?
Would a time change help at all?
I'm going to be on for 10 days.
Yeah, I won't be back till Thursday morning.
Can we...
Thursday morning?
But I'm okay. No, like, Thursday evening, I just won't be back Wednesday night until late.
Thursday, I can't do it. Unless it's first thing in the morning, Thursday.
Thursday morning?
I could do first thing in the morning, but I'm...
What time is first thing in the morning?
Eight, 8:30.
I'm good.
I'm good. 8:30.
Sell you by lunch?
Is 8:30 in the morning?
8:30.
We got, we got to be out in 30 minutes, though, guys.
We're coming up Thursday, dude.
I've been out in town.
Thursday at 8:30 in the morning. Okay.
My phone's dead, so I have to write that on my hand.
With City Manager report, Mr. Scott?
I have nothing further to add tonight.
Thank you.
Then we are in commission, I'm sorry, let me back up. We are not in commissioner comments. We are in here of the public, and this is the time to talk about anything that is or was on the budget or anything that isn't. Is or was on the budget and the agenda or anything that is not on the agenda.
That's dangerous.
Going once, going twice, sold. We are in commissioner comments. Mr. Atkins, anything? Ms. Cochran? Anyone?
I would like to say this, just in regards to the budget process we just went through. I like the fact that we can, we could discuss that and completely disagree on it, but nobody got disagreeable, and I just think that's a tribute to the people up here, and I, while it wouldn't continue. Pardon?
Say it loud.
I'll meet you outside afterwards tonight. How's that?
I'll have to have my second. But anyway, I just, I appreciate the, appreciate the discussion.
Well, and I, I want to echo that, because two weeks ago, I was, I made the motion to go full force, full, forward with everything, and I asked for people to contact me, and I'm happy about the fact that they did. And I was just trying to help us reach a midpoint, reach some kind of compromise, so it, it's good. And I want to again thank the folks who came to the meeting tonight, because I think their comments at the microphone were very helpful as well.
I agree.
Yeah.
That's pretty evident it's a tough decision. I think that we certainly, certainly don't like taxes, any of us, but we, we certainly don't want the city to go stagnant. There's a lot of energy going on right now, and we can't ignore any longer some of the things that are, are falling apart on us, unfortunately, the fire station, et cetera, so it's a tough one.
And irregardless of how the vote turned out tonight or Thursday, this community needs to know the five of us listened to them. All five of us did. Yeah.
I think the thing that's jumped out at me on all this is that the, um, we, our challenge going forward, and I think we'll meet that coming up, our challenge going forward is, is communication. To be able to share with the public in such a way that they understand the challenges that we face. I'm comfortable with staff's recommendation. I'm comfortable that we are, have done the right thing on the first reading, and when I have explained all that to people, they have a different opinion from when the conversation started, which says to me that we have to figure out a way to communicate more thoroughly. I also want to thank staff. I think last commission meeting, we had Billy Jeffries come before us with a situation.
That's right.
And I ran into him two days ago at Kroger, and he said, "Tell your, tell your folks that they did a good job", and that he appreciates...
Good deal.
Taking care of it. So, yeah, nice to hear that.
Our staff is first class.
And it really looks, it really looks good.
Good.
And we can't drop the ball, because it hadn't all been burnt up the whole way yet last time I was up there, which was last Friday, I guess, so let's make sure it gets, but it has been cleaned away and looks like a grassy field. Really looks good. And, oh, and it's important note that the property owners did the work, not our staff. The property owners did the work. They received notice, so that was good.
Anything else? Seeing none, we'll move right into item eight, payment of the bills. Do I hear a motion that we accept the payment of the bills as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second? Commissioner Cottle, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item nine is Resolution Number 2017-06-26-01. This is the Kentucky League of Cities Trust Agreement with regard to liability. Mr. Scott, any comments?
This is the standard trust participation agreement that all members insured or self-insured by the Kentucky League Cities Insurance Services requires each commission to do, each city to approve annually. We've done this for quite a number of years. There's no change from the prior year.
Move.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
That was fast, second.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. I knew what he's going to say. We're in discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call the question for the vote. Does this, this need to be a voice vote?
Yeah.
Voice vote's okay? All in favor of Resolution 2017-06-26-01 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 10 is Resolution 2017-06-26-02. This is the Kentucky League of Cities Trust Agreement Liability with regards to specifically parks and rec. Again, Mr. Scott?
Same agreement, different insured, required approval of the participating city annually.
Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval of Resolution 2017...
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle.
You're welcome, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochran. Any discussion?
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Does this go in our ledger as contribution to the park?
No, sir.
That's what I thought.
Any further comments? Seeing none, Chair will call the question. All in favor of Resolution 2017-06-26-02 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item 11 is Resolution 2017-06-26-03. This is the KLC Trust Agreement with regards to Workers' Compensation Trust. Mr. Scott?
Same concept, different insured liability required.
Ditto.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins and Mr. Cottle. Any discussion? Chair call the question, and all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 12 is Resolution 2017-06-26-04. This is the line of credit renewal. Ms. Gossar?
This is our standard line of credit renewal that we have with Farmers Bank that's held on our primary checking account, our clearing fund checking account. This is just in case that something happens and we need to borrow money for a short period of time in order to pay bills until we get, for example, a loan or federal money coming in, as we have in the past.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Representative Elliott, for coming.
Thanks for coming.
I thought you were just thanking for the motion.
Did he?
Second.
Who made the motion, I'm sorry?
Didn't you, H? Did you make the motion?
Commissioner...
You made the motion.
Commissioners Cochran, Atkins made the motion. Commissioner Cottle, seconded it. I have a question. Michelle, do we bid this piece of business out?
It can't be bid out. It's attached, it has to be at the same bank that we held the checking account, because it, it's just over draft protection.
Thank you.
I think, didn't, I think Commissioner Cochran used it to go on his honeymoon, although I understand it.
Don't go there.
I thought you were using that for your trip coming up.
Seeing none, Chair will call the question. All in favor of Resolution 2017-06-26-04 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 13 is Resolution 2017-06-26-05. This is in regards to the HDR Contract Amendment. Mr. Coffey?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. The budget for the Corporate Drive Water Main Project, Parable Road Water Main Project, as we call it, includes engineering services in the total budget. This amendment adds those services to HDR's contract, existing contract. A big chunk of that, we would note, is resident inspection, which is about $75,000 of it, which occurs during construction.
I move for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. Discussion? Seeing none, Chair call the question. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Resolution carries. Item 14 is Resolution 2017-06-26-06. This is the Centos Uniform Agreement. Mr. Coffey?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. The, as part of the clothing allowance for the outerwear for the employees, some of the employees elect to take rental from Centos, this agreement allows that transaction to occur.
So, the one in here that says Batman costume, is that yours?
No, no, that, that is not mine. That is the one I thought you wanted.
Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval.
Second.
And these are the same prices as last time?
This is actually a new vendor. The prior vendor was Springfield Laundry.
Correct.
Okay, but then showing...
We're approving the rental agreement, but the employees are actually paying for this out of their check? Is that what?
Employees receive a stipend...
Correct.
For uniforms, or they don't have to use uniforms, they can purchase their own work, clearly. A lot of them choose to have uniforms to do the service. And, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe some floor mats for the water and sewer plants are also included.
That is correct.
Any further comments? Seeing none, Chair call the question. All in favor of Resolution 2017-06-26-06, the Centos Uniform Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 15 is, is the second reading of ordinance number 1896. This is the second reading, and this is the alcohol ordinance amendment. Do I hear a motion?
I move. Passage of ordinance 1896, second reading.
Thanks, Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Commissioner Cochran.
Mayor, before a vote's called, it needs to be read into the record by the clerk please.
That's correct.
And could you also, well, that's what she's getting ready, explain what it is?
Oh. This is the second reading of ordinance 1896, an ordinance amending the existing ordinance pertaining to alcoholic beverages.
And again, to refresh your memory, this is a cleanup bill that was passed by the General Assembly, and our changes simply mirror those that were passed by the state.
I believe we're ready for vote?
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Parris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Seres?
Yes.
Item 16 is the second reading of ordinance 1897. This is the alcohol regulatory fee adoption rate, I guess. Ms. Peak, you want to explain that? We'll go in that order.
This is the second reading of ordinance 1897, an ordinance establishing the regulatory license fee for the sale of alcoholic beverages in the City of Danville for fiscal year 2017-18.
Again, I'll refresh the commission's memory. This rate has gone unchanged since Danville first had the alcohol ordinance and allowed the sale of alcohol. We're required annually to adopt the rate, as you do with the motor vehicle tax and property tax, to justify the expenses that are associated with alcohol regulatory activities. to justify the expenses that are associated with alcohol regulatory activities.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank Commissioner Serres. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. Any discussion?
I think we ought to note that it's 5% of the gross sales of all alcoholic beverages sold by drink and 4% of packaged distilled spirits.
So noted. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, Chair will call for the vote.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Parris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Serres?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Item 17 is resolution 2017-06-26-07. This is the annual audit agreement letter. Dexter?
As you're well aware, the city is required to perform an audit on its books each year, and RFH CPAs have performed those services in the most recent history of the city, and the engagement agreement before you outlines their scope of services, and the resolution accepts it, so they can begin their work.
And the service is not to exceed, I can't find that number right now. 26, 26-
Michelle may have that number handy. I don't remember the cost of the
It's in there.
There's more than one fee on there. It's, it's got a regular fee on here, and then it has up to $4,000 for the single audit portion, so it's 36,750, 26,750 for the regular, then hourly rates for any extra expense, and then up to $4,000 for the single audit requirement.
Okay, thank you.
It's on the very back page.
Do I hear a motion?
Oh, I move for approval of resolution 2017-06-26-07.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. And for Mr. Cottle, any discussion? Seeing none, Chair will call for the vote. All in favor of resolution 2017-06-26-07 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. I believe we have reason for executive session. I will, Chair will entertain a motion to
Can I make a statement before you entertain a motion?
You certainly may.
It's a compliment to the mayor. I don't know why you did it, but you asked Donna to call on you first to vote for both of those increases, I mean, the budget and the tax increase, and I guess a good word to say, that was very manly of you, but I was prepared to vote first, but it's okay.
Took the heat off of you, didn't it?
It's all right. You did okay. But, you know, that was a show of leadership, so appreciate it.
Do I hear a motion that we adjourn to executive session? Commissioner Cottle?
What are we going in there for?
To discuss existing current litigation.
Okay. I move that we go into executive session to discuss current litigation?
Pending litigation.
Pending litigation, for which disclosure of details might compromise the litigation posture pursuant to KRS 618101C.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Cottle, second by Commissioner Serres. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
I want to get Mr. Cottle.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We are in executive session. Motion, we move back into regular session.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. One comment that I'd like to draw your all's attention to, I think everybody got a copy of this. We've lost, we've lost another piece of valuable history. This is the Boyle House, which was owned by Judge Boyle. It's set just, ironically, it's set just over the line into Mercer County. But from talking to, from talking to someone who had toured it, he said he had never seen any more magnificent woodwork in any Kentucky structure he's ever been than this one. And so I highlight it because these are valuable resources.
And might I add, not only did that building come down, but all of that material was removed by a salvage company, so it didn't even stay here.
Yeah, it got moved to Tennessee. Anything else for the good of the order?
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We are adjourned.